Good evening, everyone. Do we have any public participation this evening? Wanda?
I -- when was it that the lady from the state was coming down for the boiler and into the -- or did you already have that?
Tomorrow.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay. And I was just going to ask Melissa, how were you guys coming with your security? Had you -- you had been asking about that? Have you gotten the information back about that? For the school?
Security -- security cameras?
Yeah.
I do have a call.
Talk about that this evening.
I do have a call from Fielding with me, by the way.
Yeah. Any other public participation? For once, twice, and pre-tax. To consider approval of the March 28, 2019 school committee minutes as written, all with corrections as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Do we get these through email at this time?
They were in email. Yep. When Helen sends things out, she sends the agenda, the minutes, and any other things that we're talking about. Any other chance of getting a motion on that?
I'll move to approve the motion.
Got a second on that? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, so. Does the principal's report?
She does not leave one with me, but she's not here tonight, so we don't know that.
Okay. Anyone from school three to have anything they want to add? Go ahead.
Two meetings ago, we had Mrs. Morrison here. And she had come to the board with the issue of many old computers stuck in her room. And she wanted to know what we could do about it, whether we're going to allocate any money for disposal. And I didn't see that on there, any board action. I thought it was going to be coming up on something. I know we have already paid for services rendered to remove all that. And I'm wondering, do we have to pay for it again?
I don't know. I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Because I know that was part of the job discretion for the last 11 years that we had paid for this service to be rendered. And then she said she opened up the door and all the skeletons fell out. So, yeah, I would like to know about that because I don't want to have to pay again. And I didn't hear anything if that, if her request was satisfactory.
Something sticks in my mind that there may be some type of recycling program that's available for aged electronics, but I can't swear to it, so I'll look into it.
It's open during the summer.
I think right now at our recycling center, they have those.
Do they open it now? I don't suppose for the winter.
I believe so.
So, okay, but we already paid for that service, all right?
If it was included, I believe, I believe you're correct, it was part of the expectation, if you will, of the person who previously held that job. So I don't, we didn't pay for it separately, I don't think.
No, but it was part of the compensation. We have already paid somebody to move that stuff once.
Yep.
And...
I don't, I'm pretty sure if there's recycling available, we can find a way to get it.
Are we going to have to pay somebody to remove all that? And I know that the hard drive she said was still there and everything, and those have to be disposed of. That's really not part of her job.
Right.
I don't want her to have to go out of her way because we already paid to have that done.
But I'd be hopeful we could prevail upon a civic-minded local citizen with a pickup truck.
Okay. Can we get our money back?
Actually, I think, kind of speaking loosely here, I think some from the recycling center goes out and picks up corrugated cardboard because it's --
Civic.
It makes some money. Maybe they can pick up electronic stuff because I know they make money off that, so who knows?
Right. I'll make sure this doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
I mean, he paid for something.
Yeah, and he's getting rid of, cleaning that room out, so. Okay. Anything else on the school board?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
All right. Back in September, we had discussed special education behavior and discipline procedures and to make sure that there's notification of parents. And board voted to have that secure in place, and you were going to check and get back to us. And I know that there was an email correspondence in September saying that you'll have some updates, but that was in September. So that special education children and their parents know when there's a behavioral problem that they have some different steps to take.
At the next meeting, I distributed a document to the board with some suggested lingo and some input from our attorneys. I can check the minutes. I actually don't think you were present at that next meeting.
No, but was it ever adopted?
Was it ever adopted? It was not, because as I recall, and again, I'm going from memory, I gave that follow-up to the board. And I was under the impression the board was going to provide me with some suggestion after that. But as the board requested, I did indeed follow up, gather up more information, and distributed something at the next meeting.
I would like to make sure that that's put on there as policy, not just loose. And that, so that the parents know that they have the right to appeal any kind of disciplinary procedures. Or that they can ask for a behavioral assessment or something, so it fits the needs of the special needs students. So that if that happens, if a note comes home, that they're disciplined, they also get this special note saying, "You have these rights."
Is something we have that has policy on it, or does policy exist on that?
Policy did not exist. And part of my question was whether or not the board wanted to go to the expense of having policies crafted. Because I believe I stated that if we were going to have a unique special education policy apart from the standard boiler plates, that I would not be comfortable drafting that because of the potential legality. I would contract that out with our legal services. But I would want the board to be comfortable and authorize me to go to that expense. So I can bring the information that I obtained, again, we can discuss it again. I'm making a note for myself to put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
And this board can vote to have me take that action.
I'm going to revisit that again.
Yeah. Last year, we spent a considerable amount of money of legal fees because of this. And spending it right now should curtail those in the future and be good practice to our parents and our students, I think.
Anything else on the school board? I have something. Right now, I'm in the process, I was in the process of writing up an RFP for the new boiler system. It's been given off to our legal personnel to look at it. And we're probably going to have a conference call on that next week to go over the fine details, go over an RFP, request proposals. As far as putting it out to bid, that will be something that will come down the road later. And we'll also be putting this in front of the town for their approval. So, I think you're going to be talking about that in a little bit, so I'll let you have that. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I have a couple of items in my report this evening. First, I'd like to announce that I have received notification of intent to retire by Linda Meckler. We will certainly miss Linda next year, but she has indicated that she is planning to retire at the end of this year after many years of service. We thank you for your years of service to the New Beck School Department. You will be greatly missed, but we certainly wish you well in your retirement. Couple other items that I would mention. The AOS budget was approved on April 11 at the meeting in Charlotte. As Mike has alluded to already, I have been in contact with our town manager. And we are discussing the possibility of scheduling a hearing during which the boiler project would be discussed. A hearing differs from an actual vote. A hearing can be scheduled faster. The town wouldn't necessarily be taking a vote, although if we wanted to have a referendum that could be arranged, it would just take more time. And there would be some expense to the town in retaining the services of ballot clerks and so on. But she and I are talking about the possibility of scheduling at least an opportunity for the town to give input, particularly on such a large project. So if it pleases the board, I'd like for you to give me an official direction to pursue that matter.
It seems like this request and go moving forward with the RFP are at odds.
Okay. And this is one of the things that Renee and I talked about. In a hearing, a likely question would be, "How much is this going to cost?" If A, it might cost this amount of money. If B, it might cost this amount of money. So if that's a logical question from the citizens, and I think that it is, we would likely have to have some data in hand. So I don't think an RFP to get some feedback would necessarily hurt us. The other thing that I would remind this board, anything you put out to bid, you have the right to reject all bids. So if something comes up, if there's a change in plan, if the number is just too high, or whatever the case may be, this board could potentially reject all bids. You're in control. But at this point, Mike has mentioned it, we talked about it, you know, a short while ago during our budget workshop. I'm of the opinion that we would be well-served in opening it up to potential input from the citizens to try and get a sense of how our community feels. And if this board agrees with me, you can direct me to take that action. Any thoughts?
I'd like to know if you can get a hold of the town manager and see if we can get a hearing going on the floor. Questions and answers from you.
I would like to know.
There's a motion on the floor. Okay?
As long as it's not a five-year.
All in favor of the hearing?
Can I?
You can, go right ahead.
I would like to see some, you know, you talked about, you know, Plan A and Plan B. I would like to see more than just Plan A details available, even in rough form, for this hearing, which I think is a good idea. And I quite certainly support moving forward with that. But it seems like we need a broader range of options and more.
What were you talking about? Qualify what other options are.
For instance, what we were talking about in the previous budget meeting about geothermal. It may be something that is completely undoable, but we have no information at this point.
So are you suggesting that we postpone the hearing until after we get some responses from the RFP?
No, the RFP won't give us information on anything but the current suggestion of the two boilers. I'm not saying that that's a bad idea. I'm just saying that if we're going to have a hearing, we need options to discuss.
So it gets, I'm glad you're asking that question because I want to make sure, I want to make sure that the group understands. When we put out a request for a proposal, people will bid on a set of specifications. So as I understand the process, we would have to reach conclusion as to what type of system we want, how big, how small, whatever, before we request bids. Because any vendor who wants to do the job is going to be bidding on the specifications that we say we want. So, but...
Well, it's about a distinction between bidding and putting out a request for a proposal.
Yes, yep.
Because I would like to hear from professionals what options might be available and the intent it costs.
Do we want to potentially invite some representatives from those engineering firms to come to the hearing meeting?
I can, or I can actually forward on at least two emails from two different vendors that have had site visits in the building multiple times. But it is on an oil-fired system.
Right. I would love to see either engineers or representatives from someone at the state. Because a vendor is going to be pushing their system, but someone from, you know, an energy department would have options.
I can probably get a recommendation from a gentleman I alluded to earlier, Scott Brown's in the construction project. I keep mentioning his name because any planned new school construction has to flesh out what their heating system is going to be. He's a good contact for me, and I can try and get exactly what you're talking about, what are some suggestions for this climate, this type of square footage, what we want it to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to contact the town manager and arrange for a hearing on the boiler. Would you like to amend that motion?
I would like to amend that motion and give Mr. Johnson the authority to contact the town manager to arrange for a hearing with the timeframe in conjunction with having someone come in with information.
I can make an amendment.
Okay, on the amendment, give a second.
I'll second the amendment. Let me make the motion.
All in favor? There you go.
One last item in my report. My office has put out the buses to bid again. So keep an eye out for that ahead. We did make one award in the last round, but we still have two buses that we can put out to bid. So that's what we're looking for. I don't have any information that has come back to me, but that did happen. So we'll keep an eye out. Last item in my report this evening. And this is the culmination, oh, there it is, culmination of a couple of attempts. We have received a bid from Fielding Security and Fire on the planned security system for the school. This would be the second bid that we have received. One from Fielding, and the other one, I believe, was from Seacoast. I believe the bids are pretty competitive. Mike's got the actual number right there. Can I get you to announce the number for the group?
Thirteen thousand, nine hundred, eighty-six dollars.
How much was Seacoast?
Did it have to have bid in front of us?
Not in front of me, but it's, it's on the pending open thirteen thousand dollar-ish range. That's a competitive bid.
Well, and this here doesn't really mention, it mentions equipment, doesn't exactly mention what they're going to do. As far as installing the equipment and wiring and so on like that, is that...
Do you want me to contact you and try and get some more info?
I mean, it's kind of nondescript. It's just basically telling us that we're going to put a monitor in, we're going to put these three cameras in, you know, what if they need new wiring? What's going to hold the street from the fires, something that doesn't work?
He's like a one-person firm. He'll be here, he comes himself in a van.
Around all new network cable, huh?
Yeah, I make a suggestion. When you find out for this, a couple of schools that I know vote have mentioned, you go in the office, they'll tell you they wish that camera by the door, and it could move. Because of the different light, certain times day, shadow, it's hard to see who the person is because it's fixed in one spot, right? So, I mean, it could be adjusted a little bit from inside.
So can we have both of these bids on the next meeting? And actually make them go a little bit educated, look at what we have to deal with here. I know it took quite a while to get this gentleman up here to get this bid in for us, several calls, so. Wasn't there a third company that...
They did not. Black Bear was contacted, and they did not submit it.
Was there a map put out or posted or anything, so...
I believe, I believe calls were made to solicit bids as opposed to just an open bid because there's relatively few companies that do that locally. We have a current contract with Seacoast for fire monitoring, so when the alarm goes off, when Sheldon comes down and resets it, that's actually through, that's actually through Seacoast. But Fielding, I believe, is based in Perry, O'Callas, and Black Bear is in Pembroke.
So we currently use Seacoast?
Yes.
You're at, what, at Rockland? And it's under a certain goal, and I'm not, it doesn't have to go up in favor, we can just solicit, you know, courts instead. Okay. Adjustments to the agenda.
I don't know if I have any.
All business? All business. To consider the adoption of policy J E A A student attendance slash student absences and tardiness.
I do have some copies here. I didn't get one, but I would just remind the board that at the first reading, I was asked to list in the policy from the statute what types of absences are excused. And that does appear, one through six, as stated in the policy that's been added to page one.
And this is based on what the state?
Straight from statute.
I can't see anything.
Need a copy? I mean, there's a...
Put it down.
Sure, sure.
Is it? Is it listed somewhere in here that it is state statute and what statute it is? I have. How would somebody know that that is state statute? You've accepted the statute.
I mean, is that, the citation would be the only way that I could identify.
Yeah.
Are you, like, the citation there? Again, there's a cross-reference?
Yes.
We could.
I like the idea.
Somebody can pull up the statute and read it.
Truthfully, I took it verbatim, and Helen, bless her heart, dropped it in right where I said it. If it's more convenient for the citation to be listed at the end, that's an easy fix.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, the false citation, that was my, it just says section 5205, subsection 2, but it doesn't say which, what the statute.
If it pleases the board, you could still adopt that policy with that amendment.
Do you have a motion on this?
I'm moved to approve this with the addition of the cited statute.
So to cite the statute at the end of the policy?
As a cross-reference.
Main state statute.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor? There you go. To consider the first reading of the following policies. BBBDA, school committee declared vacancy caused by absentism. This was sent to you with the school board materials last week. There we go. I've got too many things in my book pile.
This would be a new policy for you. Not really concerned about it, it's never been an issue here in New Beck. However, I have had another town where I had to look that policy up and pull it out. Typically, when we adopt one in one town, it seems like a good idea. A lot of times, we're trucking around. It's not a required policy. If this board doesn't wish to adopt it, you don't have to. I got a lot of positive feedback in that other town. They felt it was good to have on the books. They felt it was good practice. So I bring it around to the other boards for their consideration. But again, it's not a required policy. But that's essentially what I'm asking. If you think it's a good idea, okay. And just looking for a first reading tonight.
Go ahead.
Who decides if it's excused or unexcused? Any excuse? I mean, any, any excuse is viable, as long as you call in.
Yeah, right.
That's what I want to clarify.
The intent of the policy is just what Stephanie is describing. As long as somebody calls in.
Okay.
I have been in some meetings where there are two of us and myself sitting there, and I've made a 45-minute commute or something, and we can't get a quorum, and I go home. Simple phone call would have taken care of that. So that's the intent of the policy. Nobody's going to debate, any of you, if you call up Helen and say, "I can't be at a meeting for whatever time." But if we're in danger of not having a quorum, we'll pick up the phone and call around, or we will reschedule the meeting, and that will save potentially the rest of you from calling up.
But that's not what it says.
That would be, that would be how it would be implemented. If I haven't got it in front of me, what does it say?
It says, "The members shall contact the chair and request to be excused. If the chair is absent, he or she shall contact the vice chair. The chair or vice chair shall determine whether or not a request shall be granted." So there's a whole approval process that strikes me as unnecessary.
It strikes me as unnecessary as well. Because we've had people call, and the reality of it is, it functions as I described it. Because we've had to have alternate calls, and can't get a quorum, and reschedule the meeting. The intent is just that the call happened, so the meeting can either be rescheduled, or we can remind people. We can take that out and customize the policy if you want, but the intent is just so there's a notification.
Look, the select board, I believe they have something that's really simple. It's like three times, unless you have some major emergency that's happened. You know, three times, and we need to start thinking about replacing because they just, you know, you're not showing up.
Well, I think that lingo is in there, which is if you miss three times, the board can declare a vacancy.
Well, it says that the three consecutive unexcused absences from regular meetings.
Yep.
That's state mandate, isn't it, Mike?
That is state mandate. I think for the most part, the way it functions here, and it's happened probably in the last four or five years, that, you know, someone will say, "Hey, Mike, I'm not going to be here at the next meeting. I'm going to be out, you know, on April 10th or whatever," and that works fairly well. I think the big thing comes into when, you know, you have a school board that only has three members.
Right.
And that's where the problem comes in because you've got one member that's absent, so now you don't have a quorum. I mean, we can, we have a quorum here with three, so even if two of us were out, you know, we would still have a quorum. But I think the big thing that, you know, comes into play is that, is item B after three consecutive unexcused absences. You know, if someone just wants to, and I've seen it happen in the past, and it has happened on past boards where someone just doesn't show up for the meeting. They're just done with it. They're done with the whole school board thing, and they just don't show up. It happened at the end of the year, but it did happen. So, I mean, if you want to customize things or whatever to, you know, make you feel more comfortable, I think the gist of it is there. You know, two consecutive unexcused absences from regular meetings, you know, we could act as a board. Pre-consecutive, that's state statute, that, you know, you can be replaced without notice. So, I mean, myself, I have no problem with it. I think it's fairly functional, so.
I think unexcused should be something like unnotified.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it actually alluded to. It's, you know, I mean, since someone says to me, you know, "Okay, Mike, the next meeting, and I'm not going to be here," or they call me up during the middle of the day, "Oh, something came up, I can't be at the meeting because something's up." And as long as the phone call is placed, and I think, you know, in a position where we don't have a quorum, or can have a quorum because, you know, someone else is out of state or whatever. I mean, that could be, you know, something that could help out, you know, people who come for a meeting. "Oh, by the way, we're not going to have a quorum, so we can't have a meeting." And then we can address it to the public, so. I think in our case, where we have a five-member board, I mean, not having a quorum is pretty rare. So if a first reading can have a, if you want to amend things, let me know. Do you want to change things in it? Go ahead.
I like Shene's idea about, um, uh, you know, instead of unexcused, I don't like that word, um, I like, you know, without notification. If they, something to state that, you know, they didn't notify anybody, not unexcused.
Mike, please, I would like to table this and take my own shot at that.
We can do that too, if you'd like, so.
Motion to table?
Motion to table, so someone could look at it and kind of.
How, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, and timeline on that?
Next meeting.
Okay, table till the next meeting for, uh.
Second, second on table?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor of the table? Okay, there you go. Looking forward to what you have. Next in line here is J L C V immunization of students. That's quite timely.
Yes, especially to see when there's a bill before the legislature right now that would remove many of the exemptions. If you're wondering what the change is, it has been a requirement under state law for immunization for many years, you've had this policy on the books for many years. The change is the one line right below the introductory paragraph that calls for the booster shot in seventh grade for, um, Putin cough, diphtheria, uh, and the other one that's there, what was the other one, my?
Cretus. Which is, uh, tetanus, diphtheria, and cretus, which is whooping cough.
Yep, so the, the addition or the change in the policy is just that booster shot, that's relatively new, uh, since you've had your policy on the books, I think it goes back to oh four, so you've had it on the books approximately fifteen years. Uh, in my head, there is a bill before the legislature to reduce or eliminate the exemptions to immunization. So just the, just the first reading tonight.
Okay, any motion on the first reading of this?
Does the legislature, since what's in front of it now, take away some of these?
Yes.
So we run the risk of adopting a policy that may contradict state law.
If you want to wait, you can, but the, the, the change being requiring that booster, that, that's not going to change, but I don't know what the final version of the, of state law is going to be. Uh, just so, just if you're curious, in the policy, if a child that had, doesn't have immunization, I, as superintendent, can require that child to stay home, uh, that under, under the existing law. Uh, and if, and if we have an outbreak of measles, mumps, chickenpox, whatever the case may be, and we don't have a child who is immunized, they're going to have to go home. Uh, but, uh, since Shene is correct, there is a bill before the legislature that would remove the exemption, the exemptions are listed there, if you want to wait, you can.
Well, it's the religious and philosophical basis, it's the big one.
Right.
The poverty. And, and under this, the only time you can exclude a non-immunized kid is if that kid is a danger to the school.
Right.
Not the school is a danger to the kid, is the example, the.
I could probab- I could probably add, I, I, that's fine, but if I think, if I think the kid himself, um, would be at risk, I could, I could send him on too, I would, I would add on the side of safety, if we're down.
Question?
Yeah, um, this is all in the state statute? Does the state give a, a very descriptive form of what is correct?
Okay, couple of things, policy is different from statute.
I understand.
So what you have there is policy, the actual statute would read somewhat differently, for sure, but the po- the policy, the intent is to capture, is to capture what's required by statute.
And couldn't the policy be the current year statute found at this spot, and each year in the handbook, the current statute? So we stay up to date, I mean, instead of having to update our policy every year?
I see, so you're.
We, we just adopt, our policy is what the state says.
Okay.
And make it clean and simple, and here's the policy, because it may be tweaked from year to year, and then we would have to tweak ours from year to year, and that would sort of cover us.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and if you had a blanket, like, catch-all phrase that says, as state policy, as state statute changes, our policy will change the match, that, that would theoretically simplify things. I would be concerned that, uh, if I had a parent, you know, request to see the policy, those policies, sometimes they're a little dense, but they are written with the intent so the average person could get a copy and understand what it means, I don't know if I can say that about state statute. Uh, some of those are, are quite complicated, so I, I think there's value in having policy, uh, that may seem duplicative of what's already in state law, but there are times when you have to have a policy just in the three-ring binder to satisfy some requirement.
What, what if we, um, put in front of the sentence, beginning of non-immunized students shall not be permitted? What could we put in front of that, which then is followed by all these exceptions?
Okay.
Except as prohibited by state law.
Works for me.
You know, and then, and then if the state law changes, they say you can't, if you can't exempt these kids, then.
Right.
We'd reference that.
Again, you can, you can tweak these policies, I mean, I bring them to you largely as a boilerplate, and you can tweak, and the next to kind of tweak, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even worry about, so that's one you can do.
This is, this is kind of a controversial issue right now, it's kind of a hot issue, it's all over in the news and everything, and there's a lot of changes going on this year and possibly next year, and maybe it'll go federal, and isn't this something that we're going to have to really stay current on? I mean, review it, because it, it can very well change, and this could be outdated in a year.
Yeah, and.
So it's not something you can sit in there for ten years and pull it out, and it's like, ooh, this is really outdated.
Well, we, we personally, you know, don't necessarily have to monitor, monitor the legislature that closely. Main school management has somebody that monitors legislation closely, and they send superintendents updates and newsletters, but you're correct, uh, this is a hot button issue. It is something that's in the public view right now, and yes, we are going to be expected to keep up with it.
I believe it passed research, you know, and that's going from the Senate. Okay, so where do you want to go with this?
I like Shene's idea of banning that. Is this in there?
Except as amended, do you mind reading that to me again?
Um, I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Maybe I'll give it to you. Could you like reading it?
Wow, you must have been a doctor reading this like, okay, I got it.
I mean, if you look at it long enough, it comes to you, so.
Is there, is there a motion to accept as amended?
Okay, can you read that out loud, so we can hold on?
I'm sorry. More on this.
This is your first reading, right?
Yeah.
The, uh, amendment reads, except as prohibited by state law, non-immunized students shall not be permitted to a tent school unless one of the following conditions are met, and then it goes on for listing down.
Okay. You have a second on that? Gee, second. You have a motion?
Yep, gee, motion, Melissa's second.
For a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? There we go. Okay, to consider the reappointment of the former staff for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. William Ashby, probationary two, and this is for phys ed?
Yes.
Okay. Any motion on that? Move to accept him and approve him?
Approve him. The reappointment.
You have a second on that? Any discussion? Discussion?
Um, is this, uh, the certifications for the ones that were on here were all conditional, um.
Oh.
Not all of them, there wasn't, they, at this time last year, I just would like an update, or when they were hired, I would like to know that, um, have all the conditions met, been met? Um, because I know that he didn't come with, to us with, um, he can go, so, very qualified, lots of experience, but at a college level, and so, and he had had a, he has a degree in this, um, but did, did we get the conditional certification?
They did, and, um, and I can say, just so the group knows, uh, teacher qual- teacher certification, teacher qualifications, is a matter of public record, so he, so we can ask for that question in this format. I'm happy to say that Mr. Ashby is a fully certified athletic director, and he does have conditional certification in teaching health and P E, so we can renominate him in good conscience.
Is he currently our athletic director?
I can tell you that at a previ- at a previous board meeting, I was asked what the status was, my comments were that at this point, we're looking for a new athletic director. I can tell you that I said at the previous board meeting, at that same board meeting, as a matter of fact, that I had received his written resignation, and I have. I can tell you the practical nuts and bolts of it, he's still performing the functions, because somebody has to perform the functions.
No ad was ever put out for looking for an athletic director in the past by the team.
Well, and at this late date in the school year, I believe baseball and softball have already started, but next year, any appointment, that appointment, just so the group knows, that appointment is only one year at a time. So next year, I will be looking to appoint a new athletic director, at least make a, make a new nomination anyway, so that's, that's the status.
Um, qualification and certification are two different things, qualifications are your background, you know, this is.
Okay.
Yeah, and certification is, you know, here's a piece of paper, but, um, and the certifications require that you're complying to timely in keeping everything going. Is everything going okay, has there been any lapses?
When?
I'm getting answers of every single one, so.
And, 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 and this is my, and this is my answer for, for all of them. I checked certification before this meeting yesterday afternoon, because with the adoption of the new online portal, I've got a password where I can go in under a certain school department, and I can see everybody's certification status, a violation, I'd get like a highlighted pink badge that said something. I have personally checked all three of these, knowing that I was going to be renominating tonight, and if there was, if there was a certi- if they weren't at least eligible and did not at least have a conditional at this point, I couldn't proceed, so they are on the list because their certification is in good standing.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that everything was done timely, there was no lapse or anything, this is all been.
This, I, I signed the waiver, Mr. Ashby has been in his possession of conditional certification for, it's at least months, it was, it was before Christmas probably, when I signed that waiver.
All right, and he's done his part to make sure that his certification is in form?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, any further discussion? Mr. Ashby, probationary two, approval, all in favor? Melanie Libby, probationary three. You have a motion on this? You have a second on that? Any discussion? Go ahead.
Um, same thing, I, I don't want you to give me a blanket response for all three, I want to know, uh, everything's certified, everything's been timely, there's been no lapse, has that no issues?
As we, this, this particular issue was visited early this year, I can tell you that Ms. Libby did indeed successfully pass her praxis, I can tell you that Ms. Libby does indeed have valid main state certification right now as I'm sitting in my chair, and I can say from the document that the state did apply that retroactively as we suspected that they would.
Okay, and, um, I, I was not aware of some issues that are, that are public knowledge, um, she has no degree in education, it was sort of pushed through with a P R degree. And I, I, I had to, I was, I was, I said yes last year, because I was on the assumption that these were highly qualified people, and I was under the assumption that there is no core basic child psychology, child learning needs and assessment, the basics that any teacher is required by the state were all bypassed, and the only thing that was required of that certification was three online classes as, at the time, required, but I was not aware that there was no education degree attached to the qualifications.
I'll, I'll use my, I'll use this, I'll tell you what the rule is, and then I'm going to use.
I know the rules are.
I'll use an example, the state does not require a teacher to specifically have a degree in education. I'll use myself as an example, prior to getting into administration, I taught high school social studies for seven years. I have a bachelor's degree in political science from the University of Maine, master's degree in United States history from the University of Maine, certification through the University of Maine of Machias, did my student teaching in Callas, I have a C A S in educational leadership also from the University of Maine, go Blackbears. But, uh, not having specifically a degree in education is, is not a requirement, and, and I will say this from my own experience, having a more specific course of study, specifically in political science and history, helped me very much in my role as teaching United States history, government, and so on, there was no way a deficiency.
Okay, but this, these are special needs students, I fail to see how a public relations degree, uh, passes mustard for to be that, especially when there were two people that had full qualifications, had taken all those classes, and nothing was offered to them, but somebody with a P R degree, that, that, that's my problem, is that there's nothing to fall back on. There's no experience, there's no education, and I was not aware of this, nobody informed the board, um, until I Googled it and found out, and for myself, and I was, I was actually quite shocked that, um, that there is no background, educational background in understanding children, and understanding children's psychology, and understanding disabilities, and that this is a conditional certification for a one-time placement only, because it was a critical need, high need, that we had exhausted all of the efforts. And we didn't exhaust all of the efforts, because we did have two other people that were more qualified to go into that, plus we already had somebody that was already certified. So I want to know why we took the least qualified person and told the board they're fully qualified, which certified means three online classes, because I think, I think we should readvertise if we put it out there, because I, I, and, and, and Quebec hiring rules were violated in this.
As I, as I recall, we had a, our previous special education teacher gotten down midway through the year, so when the, when you made the comment, you were told we had an emergency, we did have an emergency, because we had a resignation midway through the year by Ms. Libby's predecessor.
But we had two people at the ready that could have jumped in, that were wholly qua- well, that were very, very qualified, just waiting for a slot to open up, why did we take?
I don't, I don't know who the second person is you're referring to, but I know who one of them are, and they were not waiting with bated breath to take the slot, that person was actually working for us in another full-time capacity in a different grade level. And I don't know who the second person would be that, that you describe as ready and at the wait, nor could I say if I did know, because who, who applies for a job is confidential. But, and, and this per- this person would not, this person would not appear on the list, they are, they have a professional certification now, a professional certification that I had verified, they would not appear on the list if they were not in good standing, and I guess the last thing I would. And I guess the last thing I would say is, if we want to debate this candidate any further, we will have to adjourn into executive session.
Yes, we will.
I'm done.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All abstaining? Two, two and one.
That's good. Two, two to one is essentially a move.
Scott Wilcox, probationary three.
I'm gonna move, I'm, been hearing, I followed music, obviously.
He has done, he's done a great job.
And I've heard nothing but great things like that, so I would consider it an honor to move, to bring it, like, and put it following there.
You have a second on that motion? Any discussion? Go ahead.
Um, I understand that he came highly qualified after retiring as a music teacher for many, many years, and, um, I think we're very lucky to have him. Um, I've heard absolutely nothing but good things, I've heard. Um, I know that it was from another, it was talked about when people were tired, it was from another certification, was from another state that had to be moved here to be, um, uh, timely compliant. Is the certification for him timely and compliant in the state? Has, has everything moved over, and so that we're all good?
He is in good standing, which is why he appears on the list. As far as the timeliness of the process, it does take more time to process a certification request when the documentation is being transferred to another state. The other thing I would say is, during the course of the fall, the Department of Certification was essentially in shambles, turned around time to six to eight weeks, but I'm happy to say that Mr. Wilcox is in good standing.
And he has done all, anything that was compliant with him, timely, so, I've heard no complaints. Um, yeah, I know we were looking for somebody for quite a while, and I think we are lucky to have him.
Okay, the motion on the floor with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider adoption of proposed 2019-2020 AOS 77 school calendar. This would actually be the Lubeck School Calendar.
Yes.
But based on the AOS 77 school calendar.
Right.
I believe we discussed this last meeting, something like that. You have a motion on this? Any second on that?
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Consider adoption of the staff handbook for 2019-2020. Do we have a question on that? It had to be added in there, I do, it had to do with absenteeism and, uh, I think the absenteeism won't be good, but I listed what was an excused absence. Okay, so it's the changes, uh, uh, accident procedures updated in the nurse, uh, and then no school announcements added to school messenger. Those are the changes. The next one is for the athletic handbook. Okay, any motion on that?
I'm moving to adopt the staff handbook with the changes.
Any discussion? All in favor? Consider adoption of the student handbook 2019-2020.
I think they both click together.
The changes are on that, so you could pass it around again, and look at the changes on that first page there.
Is the absentee policy updated?
Yes.
And that's the one that we just adopted tonight?
Yeah.
That, that's, okay, that was my thing.
I'll double check that, but it should be, we updated, we updated the policy.
I just want to make sure the updated policy is in there.
Okay, you have a motion on that? Have a second on that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I don't want to read the next one, but I have, so. Consider a retirement request.
As I've already reported, we've received notification from Linda that she intends to retire at the end of the year. Uh, additionally, Linda is making an additional request, uh, and I'll read from the letter, unless you want to speak directly?
No, you're fine.
Okay. She indicates that Lubeck Educational Sports Staff Collective Bargain Agreement, and she cites the page here, it states, "Any full-time employee who has worked for MSAD number nineteen a minimum of ten years," which Ms. Maker has, "and has indicated in writing by February first of the year before retirement that she intends to retire, shall be paid his or her accumulated sick days up to thirty days at his or her per diem rate of pay at the time of his or her retirement, under main state retirement guidelines and/or social security guidelines. Such money shall be added to and be part of the paycheck at retirement." Linda has some personal reasons why she is retiring, and I won't, I won't share those, but I'm, I'm, I am aware of them. What she is asking is that, she has notified us after the February first deadline, this is obviously April twenty fifth, uh, but because of her longstanding service, uh, and exemplary service, she is asking that we award her the contractual provision anyway, despite it being after the deadline. Is that what you're requesting? Okay, I've, I've, I've represented that correctly. Uh, I cannot personally go against the contract, uh, this is why it appears before the board, it's not a decision that I can make. Um, obviously, Linda has worked for us for many years, but just so the board is aware, it is after the deadline established by contract.
I move to accept third one.
Okay, is a second on that request?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Oh.
No, next one.
I, I just hate to see us losing such a special gift. I, you have an absolute special gift with children, and it's, it's gonna hit our school hard, um, and especially, and with all children, but especially the fact that you spent so many years in special education, where that gift is so needed, and so appreciated, and makes such a difference in a child's life, and I hate to lose you, but go away knowing that you made a gigantic difference in so many children's lives, and, and I keep to, to seeing it around as a school board member, but also as a parent.
Thank you.
You have, you have something really special.
Thanks, I feel good, thank you.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? I have nothing to say, at all, except- Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
To consider the discussion on the Lubeck School Department proposed budget. That was boring, oil stuff.
Yeah, horrible.
Oh, I'm sorry. BTUs and thermes and propane and oil, condensing and non-condensing. Okay, so, uh, if we want to look at page one, I can say that there have been some changes since, uh, since we last met, relatively minor, as they are reflected here. Uh, where it says total local revenue, if we go all the way to the right, if you have a pen or pencil and want to circle, uh, the negative forty-six, nine thirty, and twenty-nine cents, that represents savings to the citizens of Lubeck. Uh, if you're curious, forty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars is a little less than three tenths of a mil, something like point two seven, point two eight mils, or twenty-seven or eight dollars on property value at a hundred thousand. Uh, so that's what this, uh, budget would, uh, would impact taxation. Some other interesting data on this page, you can see, you can see your state subsidy, uh, just a slight downward, uh, tick there at six hundred and ten dollars ninety-nine cents, and we are using a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in balance forward, and your audit confirms that you have that money available. At the very bottom, where it says grand total of all revenues, the gross budget itself has been reduced by twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, so the gross budget itself is also down. On page two, regular instruction, you can see salary and benefits for our teachers, uh, and ed techs at the elementary level, along with lines for technology, general supplies, uh, books and periodicals, uh, equipment and speech, uh, also listed there. If we turn the page over, you can see secondary tuition lines on page three, uh, as I've reported at, uh, earlier meetings, uh, you're seeing a significant decline in tuition, largely because you have fewer secondary students. Rounding out this cost center, Gift and Talented Program at the bottom of page three, altogether, the total regular instruction warrant center is down ninety-six thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents, largely due to fewer tuitions. On page four, you can see the cost center for our special education teacher and the ed tech position that the board directed me to put back in, that appears in the middle of page four. Toward the bottom, you see lines for student transportation, uh, contracted services lines for psychological services, speech, OT. If you're curious what ESY is, that's Extended School Year. Finishing up with special education on page five, you can see secondary special education expenses. You still will have two students attending Calis Day Treatment, that feature is readily visible in your budget here. When it's all said and done, total special education as a cost center, uh, up a relatively modest eighteen hundred dollars. On page six, extracurricular, you can see lines to pay our athletic and non-athletic advisory stipends, you can see lines for officials, general supplies, equipment, travel, and so on. At the top, student and staff support, if you're wondering what the zeros are, I've mentioned this previously, but with the addition of the grant-funded school nurse position through the medical center, it is no longer necessary for you to share in the cost of a district nurse, so that was eliminated from your budget. Student evaluation services, thirty-five hundred, uh, that refers to star testing. You use the data to inform Title One A practice, as well as general practice. Moving on to page seven, system administration cost center. At the top, under school board expenses, you see lines for the audit, legal services, insurance, uh, travel. Bottom, under superintendent of schools, you see your share of the district budget, the AOS assessment totaling one hundred and one thousand seventeen dollars and fifteen cents, uh, is visible there, and that decreased a little bit due to your declining enrollment also. Altogether, total system administration at the bottom is down three thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. On page eight, principal's office, you see lines for salary and benefits for our principal, our school secretary as well. You see lines for the copier lease, maintenance, uh, telephone, technology, uh, and other lines are listed at the bottom. Altogether, total school administration saw an increase of seventy-six hundred and four dollars, and don't forget the ninety-three cents. Transportation and buses on page nine, you see salary and benefits for our bus drivers. You see lines for the bus, uh, payment on the, on the new bus that we took delivery of right before Christmas, uh, lines for repairs, bus fuel, uh, altogether, the line is down thirty-two thousand two sixty-six, uh, and eighty-seven buck, and eighty-seven cents. Uh, that's a significant reduction, but I would just remind the group that we had to carry, uh, more money for a twenty percent match in a grant application. Uh, we were unsuccessful in that grant, uh, but we had to prepare as if we were, uh, but, uh, your bus payment is far less than a twenty percent match on two buses. That's what has resulted in savings in that cost center. Coming down the home stretch, on page ten, facility maintenance, you see lines for salary and benefits for our custodian, uh, and also lines, as you could imagine, for water and sewer, which was increased to match the increase in rates locally. You see lines for building repairs, maintenance, trash removal, snow plowing. Two lines I want to call your attention to down at the bottom, well, three actually. You see the line for heating fuel. We, as I have reported, are going to overdraw the heating fuel line this winter. It was longer and colder than the previous winter. I have increased that line by fifteen thousand dollars. Also, in this cost center, you'll see a twenty thousand dollar line for roof repair. There's a section of our roof that is in need of repair, and that will accommodate that. Finally, and perhaps most interestingly, uh, building maintenance HVAC system, you'll see a line, uh, for seventy-five thousand. Uh, the fifteen-five that you see prior to that is money that we hope will pay for architectural or engineering specifications to be drawn up for the heating system at the school. We would then like to, uh, take that, uh, that information, uh, and put it out to potentially bid, see, uh, what it would cost. So, that is what that fifteen thousand five hundred for, uh, is represented. The diff-, the other sixty thousand is potentially what a first year's payment would look like on a large-scale project. Uh, estimates that we have in hand range from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand dollars. If you split the difference and call it an even five hundred thousand, on a ten-year payback with interest, you could be looking at something around a fifty-four or fifty-six thousand dollar annual payment. I rounded it up to sixty, uh, just to make sure that we could make that first year's payment if it comes to that. Finally, and I realize I'm going quickly, and if it's too quick, I apologize, it's only because we had a four hour, a two-hour, uh, workshop right before this meeting, it started at four. Food service program, you see salary and benefits on page eleven for our cook and assistant cook, lines for food, non-food. The contingency remains the same, as you can see, and on page twelve, you can see a summary of what cost centers went up, what cost centers went down. But all in all, I am happy to say that this budget, at least in this form, would pass on forty-six thousand dollars in savings to the taxpayer, and that would include a potential first payment on a capital project for the heating system. Any, any, any questions? The budget committee had a few more questions at the earlier meeting, but that's understanding.
Did you say it's down forty-six? Or you said it's, it's twenty-two?
That's the gross budget. The savings to the taxpayer is, is forty-six, and it's listed on page one. And the reason it goes from twenty-two gross to forty-six savings to the taxpayer is because- is because we're using unbalanced forward from a previous audit.
Okay, this is something we don't need to go on. We need a budget, another budget committee workshop?
Yes, historically, we have saved the third workshop for immediately preceding the referendum vote. Uh, that way, if any citizens who may not have come to the workshops or to the board meetings, I can certainly feel any questions right before the vote and I'm happy to continue that practice. We do not have a date scheduled for that referendum vote, but we're gonna have a May meeting, obviously. Uh, we would need to, I would like to have a budget adopted, uh, in May, but with the outstanding information that we are seeking from, uh, from other sources on the heating project, we may have to wait to finally adopt a school budget in June. But, uh, the budget workshop, I'm happy to have our third and final one right before the vote. So if any citizens have questions right before they vote and it's fresh in their mind, I can field those questions at that time.
How soon, um, how soon did Brittany say that the town meeting could happen? Or not the town meeting, but the, uh, the thing about the boilers?
The hearing?
Yeah, the hearing. Um, how, how soon can that happen?
A, a hearing can happen much faster and she did not give me a timeframe. However, I can tell you municipal law says if you're gonna have a referendum, it's like a 30-day posting for, for a voting round. So we can have a hearing faster than we can have a referendum vote. And that, and the timing may come into play, so.
I understand that. I was just wondering if there's a seven-day or 14-day because I know we have to get some more bids and I know that people are gonna want this information before we present the final.
I mean, I, in, in my mind, if you're wondering what I'm thinking, if we can have the hearing before the end of May to inform, uh, to inform this group so you can approve whatever final version your budget takes in June, I think we'll be, uh, I think we'll be moving well.
We need to schedule to have two meetings in May.
Right, yep, so.
Right.
Meeting is adjourned, 7:00.
Excuse me?